I hope everybody understood at least that portion, we won't interpret that one, so that we can officially start. In order for us to officially start, we will sing the national anthem of the republic and we will request that we all rise on our feet as we take the national anthem. Thereafter, I will introduce my colleagues who are with me on stage and I will outline how the program will be run for the time that we are here. So we will officially start now. Thank you, thank you very much.
Ya bolela.
Once more, a hearty welcome to everyone who has made it to be here on a Sunday morning.
Wakona genkamke la, wugmto te wa tajinkla, itu balakba azo balapa, ekse ngekawi.
We know that there are many other things and competing priorities which you could have attended to, including church.
Siyaz bazin, ninsin to bono zenzake namplange, wukuka ge wuya ikawi.
But you are here with us, we truly appreciate it.
Koto agewlapan unati, siya bolela kakuhu.
Before you is the Portfolio Committee on Transport from the National Assembly.
Pam gweeni portfolio committee, ye zo tu tu, esu akunliwiso mte tu.
And we are here to listen to you as it relates to the rail safety bill that is before this committee.
Sizé apaga suzowa izin vozin, gugu pegsedele, gungmte tu yilwa yewe zo tu, okusele gogo zo tu tu.
For the duration and for the purpose of this interaction, we regard this place as a parliamentary sitting of the Portfolio Committee on Transport.
Gwainkubu za bekube kala apa, nageliklashasadesila apa, za utata geni lenkubo, nje oba sekuba iparlament.
The rules of the National Assembly which we subscribe to give us the authority as a committee to convene a meeting anywhere. So when we convene here, it's a meeting of the committee in line with the rules of the National Assembly.
Klasi kuba geni lenkubo, sisa ikuba, nentlanganuso, ogungati sekuba, gundlu esee yewiso mte tu, esisedenza ngali, nemi te tu, nemi kapkasa isedenzisa, ile si sa isedenza, esisedenza, gundlu wiso mte tu, sisa uwienzake lenkule si kuba, ngolcho bosenza ngalo.
So what will happen is that I will introduce my colleagues who are with me.
Tiza kwazisa yu oka bam, ndamba nam.
Thereafter, I will take a seat respectively to highlight what this bill is about.
Tiza ulchanapansige nditkaze ndekaba kaba, oguti lungmte tu yilwa yu unga antuun.
Thereafter, we will invite you to talk to us as to what you would like us to hear from you.
Enva, gogo gesu za utati zinvozin.
Our request is that we structure our input in the, in two ways.
Bessa ukela, oguti kanibeka izinvozin, nenzane izinjenasimbi mi, tiza ukaz.
The first way is to indicate new things that you think the committee should consider and include in this draft bill as it debates it.
Eyo ka, yo guti uza ufaka izinvoza, kominshambukonisindwezinja, any ziva, oguti spanelufa kulumte tu yilwa, oka ni esu nukongesu, gulumte tu yilwa.
And secondly, we would like you to indicate things that you think should not be in the bill or should be amended in a particular way in the bill.
Ezinye genisa ukazu, oguti sese pisi ndweben ngatanda bazin ngabiko gulumte tu yilwa, oka ni mazilungiswa gulumte tu yilwa.
If we confine our input in that way, we will make a meaningful progress.
Gugu bagesfaki zinvozi tu, ngolcho bonitkaze ngapambili, sisa ubani inkubela, gwenze nmusibinzutwa namplange.
We also humbly request that we do not raise issues that are outside this bill.
Benza ukela, guti singa faki izinvo, ezina pegselenaa, gulumte tu yilwa yu singa wana namplange.
Whilst we cannot dispute the fact that there might be many burning issues that affect us one way or the other.
Siyaz bagenisa, ninsigizindu ezis, ezis, mklamgeno, oka ni ezis trapazalayo, koto agia askuazu, goba sitetengazo namplange.
The other thing that it's worth noting is to note that we are not here to enter into a debate or answer questions. We are here to listen.
Kedan silapa, suzoma mela izinvozin, asisa ngakuzopendula, oka ni sebe kunmoto, nganga ipi ngai into, suzoma mela kupela.
The structure of your input, we request that you limit it to three minutes maximum.
Bessa ukela, kau faki zinvoza, uthe tenje imizuzu eli mitatu.
The reason is to allow as many people as possible who would like to contribute.
Kesi za tusoro, oguti baba balinsa abandaba zo kwazua ngapambili, nababa fakisabo izinvo.
When you do come and talk, we would like to know who you are, what organization, if you represent an organization, you represent, and after or before your input, we would like to know whether you support or you do not support the bill before us.
Ka uzage ngapambili, besa utanda, guto uza zisi, ukaza mambo tu omele uba ngaba ukona, ubesa osite ukabeli, ukaza guti uyaukaza na lungmte tu yilwa, oka ni aukaza.
There might be people who feel uncomfortable to speak in public.
Basen koko nage abantu kaba ngazo khullega, uthe tapamka abantu.
There might be people who might have got this draft bill for the first time today and they might not have had an opportunity to go through it.
Basen koko nage abantu abafumenilpepa lalumte tu yilwa namplange, abangi ekubaguazge, ubaba ufunda wonge namplange.
It is not all lost.
Nogoge, aku kona gina alondole.
At my extreme left against the wall and your extreme right.
Kasekotlo, kagom, e righti ngakuni.
There are people facing you there.
Kukona abantu abakoye ngapa.
That's a team from parliament who have got a form that you can use to write written submissions.
Abantu kebase parlament, abana ma pepa, anisa ukwalisa kuyushikilele, wonge izinvozin, ninfuna ukuzebeka.
You can take the form, go home with it, fill it at your leisure and send it to an email address that is indicated there.
Ungalitata kele pepa ulshikale lupale pansi, ugo tu genalo, utuka ufike kaya, uthumelenge email.
You can complete it today before you leave and leave it with them.
Ungaytwalisuka benamplange, iambena, bokade kutuka.
So there is still an opportunity, in other words, to do written submissions.
Seko nagituba lo guti, unga fakisivozaku, ngokupalapans.
Even if you would have spoken today but later you think of something else, you are not excluded or precluded from still submitting something written at a later stage.
Nogu bage buye wa tetanamplange wa fakisivozaku, awanga, guti unga kobe kala upale pansi, ubesa ufaki zinvozaku.
Lastly, I think before I introduce my colleagues, I request that when people do speak, we give them the necessary respect and allow them to make their input, whether to you it doesn't make sense or to you, you don't like the person who's saying it or whatever reason. We request that we respect each other. Don't howl other people down. Do not scream while people are talking. Let's allow them to give their input.
Pam brenda zese oka bam, bendisa ukela, oguti sese shlonipe umdoza azonige zinvozake, simshlonipe singamkwazi, singamwe ulu ba angakwazukubeka tetesim, nigelo, ngonipoguti akwazukhulega nigeza izinvozake.
So I will now introduce my colleagues and I will start from my extreme right. Firstly, it is Honorable Seicholo, who is a member of parliament and a member of this committee. Next to him is Honorable Ramadua. Next to her is Honorable Kumalo. There is an unwelcoming audience today. Next to myself here is Honorable Hunsinga. Next to him is Honorable Sitole. Last but not least from the committee is Honorable Pete May. I said last but not least, but there is still another person and the reason is that he is our guest. He is not a member of this committee but he's a member of parliament representing the Eastern Cape rather of the NCOP. And the reason that distinction I'm making is that we are different houses who operate under different set of rules. Very, very important. And we will explain at the end that once we are done, the NCOP will have another opportunity for itself to look at this bill and he will be fully participating there. But he's our guest and he's Honorable Apleni from the Eastern Cape representative in the NCOP. So they will be saying, but why did he say last but not least, you know, and try and put konote? That distinction is very, very important. Parliament has got two houses, two different set of rules. They've got different way of processing legislation. So I thought I will make that particular distinction. So we are ready to start and I think, oh, my name is Lisa Manu and I'm the chairperson of the Portfolio Committee on Transport. I normally start by myself, so today I nearly forgot who I am, not forgetting who I am actually. Have you ever heard that advert where somebody at the airport said, "You know who I am, you know who I am"? So I don't want to sound like that man. So with your permission and without disrespecting you, I would like to sit down now and introduce to you the bill before us.
Genvume yenbenda utata, itu banishale pansi, ndinenzale, ingazelo, kalomte tu yilwa.
The bill before us, as I've said, it's a rail safety bill.
Umtetolo yilwa lo pam gweitu, gumte tu okusele gogo noliwe.
By its very nature, the bill is really about rail safety and nothing else.
Lungmte tu ge yilwa yonje, okusele gogo noliwe kupela ikuwene.
The bill is intended, once we have concluded our process and if we agree to replace an existing act which is the National Rail Safety Regulator Act.
Lungmte tu ge klasisi kudilesa kukonde langao, uza utata ge wyo uambaye, wyo by National Railway Safety, usuke la ku National Railway Safety Act.
This bill also seeks to promote the use of rail as a preferred mode of transport.
Lungmte tu ge uzama uko puchlisa oguti, lo, itu, ololiwe, ibe yanandela, yu kusekenziswa, yu kuambaye nguzo tu tu.
That would also be able to positively contribute to the country's economy.
Eza gwenza, ge ikwazu fakela umtelela omla, yu kokoshenuelizu.
The bill that is before us does retain a couple of elements that are contained in the National Rail Safety Regulator Act.
Lungmte tu ge unezindo ezinbalwa, ezinbona galayo, gumte tu, umtetu welizu, lokusele gogo noliwe.
It does seek to provide greater clarity on several other issues.
Ikaktesage nemiba etile.
It also introduces new concepts which are designed to enhance rail safety.
Ikuwazisa, injenasiza, zoko poto ilako okusele gogo noliwe.
The bill seeks to place emphasis and focus on rail safety, as I said.
Jabe nchilo ge lungmte tu yilwa yu wenza, uba kuwalase kaku le okusele geni gogo noliwe.
It also recognizes the operator's role in managing and implementing safety measures.
Itu magenaba sebenzi, guzo, bezololiwe, oguti baba kwazu, gwenza, umsebenzi, nasae kunsegisa okusele.
And the Rail Safety Regulator ensuring compliance with such safety measures.
Umlawili wezo okusele gogo noliwe, ukunsegisa oguti, gwenzo, kagutle, okusele gogo noliwe.
Furthermore, the bill seeks to provide governance or rather guidance on the governance of the Rail Safety Regulator.
Umtetu yilwa yu ge, uka kwazu, gwenza, iskokele, gulumlawili wezo okusele gogo noliwe.
It also seeks to address a couple of concerns that have been raised over time by operators.
Iye ge ilungiswa, oka ni ipendule, na ipinimaga, esiteza, dibana naboba se, abanga basebenzi guzo loliwe.
I will now, in the next few minutes, take you through some clauses and highlight some issues that I've referred to.
Imizu zunjela ndela, ye genisa wamba nani, kuma kajala, akoya apa, kulumte tu yilwa yu, ndinibo nese ku.
From clauses one, clause two, clause three, it is really an introduction, it deals with definitions, it deals with the application of the bill and lastly, it deals with the object or the objectives of the bill.
Ikakela kala, nesibino, nilesha tu, litkaza ge, diteta ge ingazelo, nenjongo, gonye nemi sebenzi, yu mte tu yilwa.
Like any piece of legislation, there is always provision for exemptions in application of that piece of legislation.
Na wupige na umtetu, kuba koke indelela, apa, kususwa yu, oka fanele kanga, uba kusekenziswa gulumte tu.
Akondi suswa. Exemption, in other words, uvumela banya bandu ba, leni peace, iseno ngabiko applicable, gokwanguku. But lauti asuswa, it totally changes the meaning, exemption.
Yenzage, uka zoguti, ingase, ingasekenzi, ingase, ukuvumela wena, uka zoba, okusedenza lungmte tu.
Okay, mandi ikakese ngolcho. Useno uti umpatiswa wezo tu tu, ewe lungmte tu, siya ufaka kodwa, okwanguku, sisa asizu enforce, oka ni asizi nyanzelisa, inda uetile, kute kobe liklasheltile, yu exemption layo, aichukuba law section, ya kujwa, kodwa guto aizu sekenziswa, okwanguku, until kufikele liklasheltile. I think, Lord, distinction, imelba ikaka. So clause four deals with the provision for the minister to approve exemptions as it regards the application of the act. Clause five, clause six. Okay, clause five first provides for a continuation by the Rail Safety Regulator to be governed by a board.
Ikakela neshtanu, likunsa yusoba umsebenzi, umsebenzi we RSR, okobe ge unga pasam, sekanga, ukuzi RSR ilawlo ipu.
Ibu diye RSR, inga pasam sek. That's what I was saying. Clause seven describes the functions and powers of the RSR.
Ikakela seven, litonge, kumi sebenzi, ye RSR.
Clause nine, clause ten and clause eleven deal with the process of appointment of the board of RSR who may be a member and the duration of the term of office of a board.
Ikakela nine, nine, ten, eleven, litonge, ikakela nine, ten, eleven, litkaza oguti.
It deals with the process of the appointment of a board and the duration or the term of that board.
Ichonga, ulawila, nogutrongwa kuipu, gonye neklasa elo iba ipu, iti ma itata itlasanga nani ba ibekhona.
Clause twelve deals with the appointment of a chairperson and deputy chair of the board.
Ikakela twelve, litonge sa, eku ukasweni, kumushtanu, nosegela slal.
Ba yathrongwa, ba kashon, ne, ibodi, na kasho, ya thong. Clause fourteen describes the functions of the board.
Ikakela fourteen, litkaza nisibenzi ipu.
It also deals the providing the governance of the RSR.
Ikuwala, bonisa ulawlo, lokulawlo aye RSR, ipu diye RSR.
Clause fifteen and clause sixteen deals also with the resignation of a board member, what process is undertaken should a board member want to resign.
Ikakela gele fifteen, litkaza ge, ge lungu le board, kana bali ge li, funali yeke msebenzi, nenjela, kufanele kujwengayo.
Also clause sixteen deals with conditions under which the minister may terminate the term of a board member.
Ikakela sixteen ge li, miga, mkhombanjela, ogutumpatiswa, agapelisa njani, ikasa lokusedenza, luli lungu le boardi.
Clause eighteen deals with the authority or the process of appointing subcommittees of a board to further enhance the functioning of the board.
Ikakela eighteen, litonga, okusedenza kuipudi, nenjela ma kujwengayo.
Clause twenty deals with the issue of the appointment of the CEO of the RSR and senior employees.
Ikakela elo ge, litonga, utongwa kuipu CEO, nabanyabaza, abaza banga balawili, berebe pu.
Clause twenty-one gives authority to the minister or empowers the minister to dissolve the board under certain circumstances.
Ikakela twenty-one, linigeza, umpatiswa, oguti akwazu, amanla, yokuwa akwazu, apelise okusedenza kuipudi, ubanga ba kufanele, gwenze genjal.
Clause twenty-seven deals with the funding of the RSR.
Ikakela twenty-seven, litonga, nogu ingo amali, ye RSR, nogu reza ingo amali, ye RSR.
It provides that the RSR may, through levies for instance, raise monies on top of money that would be appropriated by parliament.
Imigeza, mkhombanjela, indlela, abano kuazu, oguti, baba kwazu, yu gwenza, ingo amali, esetali, esetali, nikunaleyo, baynikwayo, iparlament.
Clause twenty-one clearly states that the RSR reports to the minister and parliament.
Ikakela twenty-one, litkaza oguti, RSR, ya, miga za ingelo, umpatiswa na kuparlament.
One of the critical aspects that this bill introduces or amplifies is what we call safety permits.
E na ndogelo mte tu yilwa yu, wenza, imigeza, imvome, zokusele.
Clause thirty makes provision for processing of application for permits.
Ikakela thirty, linigeza, mkhombanjela, wenjela, yu ufaka izitelo zinvome.
Also provides for steps that the RSR should follow in approving or refusing an application for a safety permit.
Imigeza, nama nyatela, kufanele walande, le RSR, ekuvumelen, oka ni kuwalen, kuba magonegezelo imvome.
Clause thirty-one makes provision for conditions subject with a rail safety permit may be issued or under which conditions a safety permit may be issued. It is clause thirty-one.
Ikakela thirty-one, lonali, miga za mkhombanjela, oguti, imigeza njani, oka ni injele, kufanele ba imigeza, imigeza, ngazi pinesi zatu, imvome, ye pemi, imvome, ye zokusele.
Clause thirty-three deals with the process of surrendering a permit, suspension of a permit or revoking a rail safety permit.
Ikakela thirty-three, ipegisellele, eku, mama miseni, oka ni eku koksweni, oka ni eku bangesweni, wenvome.
Clause thirty-five provides for the evaluation of training institutions.
Uclause thirty-five, ucholese, eku sholeni, ku, ucholese, eku sholeni ku, kualamazi ku, akakasha.
This clause provides that the RSR must evaluate prospective training institutions which have applied.
Elika ge, litonga, oguti, ezlamazi ku, akakasha, afanele uksholo nganjan, joba be faki izitelo.
Clause thirty-eight.
Ikakela thirty-eight.
Provides that or proposes that the RSR must establish a consultative forum with operators.
Ikakela thirty-nine, lenza, oguti, yu miga mkhombanjela, yokuwa ma kutalo iforum, eza hambi sana, oka ni iteti sani, isedenza sani, ne, iforum.
Clause forty-one.
Ikakela forty-one.
Provides for the appointment of suitably trained persons as railway safety inspectors.
Imiga mkhombanjela, oguti, ma, i, abaxholi, bezokusele, ne ku, bekufanele, oguti, baba njani.
Clause forty-two up to clause forty-six.
Ikakela forty-two, ya forty-six.
Provides for powers and duties of railway safety inspectors.
Imigeza, mkhombanjela, wamala, nemi sebenzi, yaba xholi, bezokusele.
Clause forty-seven describes the powers of a railway safety inspector.
Ikakela forty-seven, inikaza, ama gonya, wo, wo, momsholi, okusele, okuselo, wezo, wezo loliwe.
Clause forty-eight describes the duties of an operator.
Ikakela forty-eight, litkaza, nemi sebenzi, umsebenzi, wezo, wezo loliwe.
After a railway occurrence or a railway accident.
Enva, ba uye kuakwa isesho, oka ni ingozeke akhona.
Clause forty-nine places an obligation on an operator to report to the RSR any occurrence.
Ikakela forty-nine, inyanzelisa, ye RSR, oguti ma itkasi, imige ezinngelo, gento etenze, ga isesho sitesa bakhona.
Like any piece of legislation, there might be people who are not satisfied who are not satisfied with one thing or the other as it relates to its application. Clause fifty-four up to clause fifty-six deals with a appeal mechanism against any decision that the R S R might have taken. Clause fifty-seven and fifty-eight provides for offenses and penalties. Clause sixty-one deals with the minister's general power to make regulations. It also provides for consultation and notification processes. Clause sixty-three up to sixty-five empowers the minister to make regulations concerning infrastructure. As it relates to infrastructure. Clause sixty-six authorizes the minister to prescribe fees. In respect of matters provided in the bill. As I go to the end, clause seventy proposes the repeal of the N R S R Act. In other words, it says at the end, if this bill is coming into force as an act, it defines a process under which we move from the existing act to the new act with no disruption. Clause seventy-one simply provides for the name. At the commencement of a new act, it will be called the Rail Safety Act. That is the end of my very high level summary. It does not at all limit you to what I've raised. You can comment on any other clause in the bill. So at this point, I will take hands. Or I will recognize hands. I won't take them. I won't take your hand. I'll just recognize your hand. You are more than welcome to express yourself in the language of your choice. The, as I acknowledge you, I will say you are number one or number two. I kindly request that you find your way to the center of the hall. And as a reminder again, we request you introduce yourself. You limit yourself to three minutes and indicate whether you support or you do not support the bill before us. If we really cooperate, there will be no need for anybody to be asked to stop. But should that need arise, we will stop you. So I'm ready to take hands. As I said, uh, we are not here to answer questions. We are here to listen to inputs as it relates to the bill before us. So I'm starting on my left, not because of any other reason, but I'll just start at the left. Any hands on my left, which is this side? Any hands here? Nobody? I've explained everything. Okay, you are number one, sir. You are number two, sir. Anybody else on the side? I'm coming to this side. Uh, you are number three, sir. Mama, you are number four? You are number four, yes. You are number five? Uh, am I missing anybody this side? You are number six, right at the back, in a Caesar Chiefs T-shirt? Oh, it's Orlando parade, sorry. My eyes are showing me Caesar Chiefs, excuse me. You were number, sorry, what was that number? These people are disturbing me here. I, I think it was six. Was it seven? Six or seven? Uh, Budi, you are seven. You are eight. You are nine. Um, anybody else? All right, let's take those hands. We will have another opportunity. Uh, I know after the first people have spoken, ideas will come to you, which I call brainwave. They remember, yes, this is what I wanted to say. When the first person is ready, we are ready to listen to you. You may go ahead, sir.
Greetings all, in the name that is above every other name, the name of Jesus, the author and the finisher of our faith, our honourable parliamentarian portfolio committee. Welcome to the Eastern Cape, the province of Lesans, Buffalo City, a city hard at work. My name is Paramount Chief Joseph Creely and I'm speaking on behalf of the Grikwara Council of Eastern Cape. I welcome you all here to Islanum, the friendly city. My intent is to do, give an input, to ask a question and with the hope of amending the bill. We are happy with the bill, but there's just-
Can I, can I interrupt you?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry about that. The sound where we are seated is not very clear. So I'm not sure, but, but just bear with us. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Uh, the sound people, please help us. We want to hear everything. Um. I don't know whether it's like you are far or what, but is everybody hearing well on the floor there?
Are we all okay? Kitesers, kitesers.
I know it's a Sunday morning. I see people are... Please go ahead. I, I think Dogotela, can you guys hear there well? Okay, please go ahead, sir, so that we don't derail you totally. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Uh, can I just get my time back with the interruption? Yeah, I've got a question. With this, in the current status quo of South Africa, in our railway, uh, system and, and lines, um, I've got this question. I have a few questions. Under the current government, how will the residents of our areas be included into the railway framework in the terms of safety of our people? Coming to this, our railways in, in all our areas across the country are being vandalized. Our stations are in a dilapidated state. If you look at the R, the condition of R, the R is down. If you travel to the sky, the trans sky, our communities were normally dependent upon our railway lines, but now we have to take taxis and they are very expensive. Okay, there's, there's back. The railway lines that's flowing through our areas, coming from the harbor through Pafavu, Duncan Valley, and all our areas, how will our residents be, 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 be safe with our vagaries, with the criminal activities, uh, vandalizing our railway lines? Our lives are at stake, even the lives of the perpetrators that does this criminal activities are also at stake. What happened to the South African railway police that was existing and protecting our stations like Port Rex and our harbor? According to job creation, where will our youth, our elderly fit into the framework in this ball? Will there be means made for them to, 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 to get job creation? My, my, my second one is, my last one is, we thank parliament for coming to the people, but I desire a lot. We, in section, paragraph eight, section five, the last paragraph, our traditional leaders is not inclusive, will not be inclusive in this, in this safety ball. It is stated, how we are, we are, we are here now giving inputs and requesting amendments? Can parliament then just include us into, into this framework, into this ball? Because we are part, after all, we are the custodians of this land and we have got direct connections and, and with our communities as a, as a whole. We should think that parliament should spend more money into making our railways, lines and stations safe because our criminals is taking over across the country and we needed ASAP because-